Please welcome Commissioner President Lynn James and Commissioner Chuck Whitney. All right, before we get started, I just want to read some things for the audience. As you'll note on the screen, if you could refrain from applause and making any kind of reaction just for the sake of time, that would be appreciated. And if you could all silence your cellphones, and I guess it's too modern for beepers, but if anybody has one, I guess, turn that one off. The format is I will be reading questions submitted by both the public and just developed by myself. And whenever there's public questions, I will announce that they're public. They will, both candidates will have two minutes to reply to the questions, and then 30 seconds for rebuttal if they choose to do so. There won't be any secondary rebuttals since we're calling this a forum and not a debate. We flipped a coin at about 6:45, and Commissioner Whitney decided he will speak second for his opening statement. So at this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Lynn James to read her opening statement.
Do I need to turn this on?
That's going to be a challenge.
Do I turn that on? It's on, okay. I feel like I'm too short in here. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present my leadership views. No? Okay. Okay, can you hear me better now? Great, great, okay. We'll start over. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share my leadership views and philosophies with you all. I have served the citizens of Bowman as the president of the city commission for the past 12 years. During that time, the decisions made by the commission consisted of five-person votes, with mine always being the fifth and final vote. Each time I voted, I gave careful consideration as to the best interests of Bowman and its citizens. I have led with the utmost integrity and transparency, and I look forward to the opportunity to continue doing so for all of you in the future. Thank you.
Okay, now, which button did you push? This thing is not working. There. Thank you. Good evening. Is that working? The blue light just went on, on and off. Is that every day?
If you want to hold them, that's fine. Instead of...
Well... That's what you have. That one's not there. There you go. Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to see all of you here. This democracy at work. I've been on the commission for only four years, which is not the same length of time. During that time, I've asked some tough questions. Some would see that as a statement of ignorance. For me, it's not a statement of ignorance, it's a question of why are we doing this, and what other information is useful to have. Sometimes that seems threatening by the people who, to whom the questions are asked. But I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. When it comes down to who's got flesh in this game, I think we both do. This has not been an easy choice for me, both four years ago and now. I'm here because I feel this is the right thing to do, it's the right thing for Bowman.
In terms?
In terms of leadership, my leadership skills are in fact are a bit more diverse than just the city commission. I've been a district governor for the western half state of the, state of North Dakota for Lyons. I've been the president of the North Dakota Lyons I-Bank. I've been on quite a few boards. It's given me a diverse background in terms of what to do for the most number of people.
That's time.
Thank you.
You can wrap it up.
I think that's, if I'm doing it over time, we're going to be in trouble anyway.
All right, well, expect to hear my voice on. All right, and we are working out the keys. This is the first time we have, we're actually live streaming the debate on our website, and this is the first live forum held, so bear with us. All right, so the first question is to Commissioner James. The industrial park received a large amount of criticism from local residents, including those who live near the area. The project has been described by the Bowman County Development Corp. as integral to the city's future, but many are skeptical about enough businesses filling that large area in a timely manner. How do you respond to those critics?
The industrial park is a very important piece of our future here in Bowman, and I truly believe in that. Anytime you have a project such as that, it takes many years for it to fill, as you say. So, we can't expect within five years that we'll have it full, maybe not even 10 years. But we also have to have an area that is what you call shovel-ready. We have actually lost businesses to other communities because we were not ready for such a site. And so, with that being said, we are looking to have a vision for the future. You know, you look at our Divide Street that runs through town. The city commissioners had the vision back in the 40s to make Divide wider, and that was when they were first paving. And so, that was against the odds, because the locals were going to have to pay a special assessment, and they did not want to. Closer, okay. And they pushed for it anyway. And look at how we use that street. In fact, right now, you might notice it even more than ever, because we can't use it with the project going. You know, at the national level, back when Teddy Roosevelt was president, he had the vision to put together a national park system, again against the will of a lot of people, because they said it would cost too much to operate, and no one would use it. And look at what we have in our, in our nation now with that. So you have to look at the vision, and we have invested in things here for the people that live in the city, and we will get opportunity to speak about that later in the infrastructure portion. But we also have to take some of, some of our funding and look toward the future.
Commissioner Whitney, your rebuttal?
My rebuttal is fairly simple. Why there? It's more soil, it's expensive to build on, and the long-term instability of building an infrastructure, even if you do dig down and replace with engineered fill which be gravel and dirt, will only partially solve the problem. Other sites have better soil for an easier build. One comes to mind, so does Baylen.
What is it, just about, what states did you say? To a Steve Allen's land and?
The, the Lund Division as well. Those are, those are two that are relatively close. There's additional lands available, long railroad tracks, should that be a viable option?
All right, back to Commissioner, or to Commissioner Whitney. You cast a vote against using a part of the city's one-time search funds to provide infrastructure at the industrial park, while your opponent voted for it. There are no specific rules on how to use those funds according to the bill, though it was said by a county commissioner that the city would have to stand a quote-unquote "rent-based test" at the legislature when explaining what those funds were used for. Do you think there were potentially more pressing concerns facing the city in the present that could also withstand a rent-based test?
Yes, I do. We expanded our sewer rehab, for example, we're doing a lot of work with 11th Avenue on the north side. In terms of places where this money could better be used, something that is a, an elephant in our room, nobody really wants to face it, is the quality of our drinking water. What we deal with in terms of sodium levels and other mineral levels right now are in the barely acceptable range. There are people with health issues in our community who perhaps would be better served if we were to look at something safe, for example, an industrial-grade reverse osmosis system. I have several colleagues in the Lyons group in Canada who have done this. It doesn't have to be a multimillion-dollar thing, but it is one of those things that could help. That's one. A sewer cell, how am I doing timewise?
Do you have about a minute?
Okay. Shouldn't we be looking at another sewer cell in our lagoon system? As of what we have right now, we're fine, but if we were to have a surge in population, we might not be fine. There's another place where I think some money could be spent, well. Shouldn't we be expanding our watering, watering rehab? My personal opinion is yes. Should we fix Main Street? There's certainly diversion opinions on that. Some of the pipe that's underneath it is the oldest pipe in Bowman. Particularly on the north part of Main Street, it's very, very difficult for those businesses to basically bargain for people to get in and out of their businesses because of the rust. Those are things that I feel could be, could be well-spent.
Commissioner James, your rebuttal?
Two things, briefly. You say you're opposed to spending the money for that project, however, you did make the first motion to fund it at that location, earning dollars.
Commissioner James? We agreed not to directly engage.
Okay, I, I'd just like to make that clear. But I do also want to talk about the water. Do you have documentation on, I don't know if I, I don't know how I cannot ask that, with the water system and our water being order line? We have that tested. I just want the people to know, we have our water tested on a regular basis per the health department, the health department. So I shouldn't want to see their people.
And we're going to come back to that issue in questions down, so. A little, oh, do you think? Back to the industrial park, Commissioner James. In 2009, the bond for the joint city-county shop was refinanced for lower payments by extending the length of the bond to 2019. Four of the five commissioners that voted for the shop were re-elected in that, in the 2012 election. But the city has been plagued with conflict over that project ever since. Do you think the industrial park is heading down those same lines?
I would hope, I would hope not, for one reason in particular. The industrial park is being funded with search funds and BLM funding, and so there is, there are no bond issues, there are no interest to pay. That money was a gift to us to use for the citizens, which we have used most of it directly to benefit the citizens in town, and the balance we're using for long-term benefit with a vision for the future. So I would certainly hope not.
Commissioner Whitney?
Your remarks about Teddy Roosevelt are certainly, certainly accurate. I don't know how well this thing started. This, sorry if this thing cuts me in and out. To compare the industrial park to our national parks, I think is rather a stretch of the imagination, because we do have other places in town which will do a better job than the former airport. One of the things that Commissioner Solomon did for me in the process of considering this was to line me up with Tammy Janikowski, who works at the Soil Conservation Department here for the US government. And one of the things that I learned is that soil doesn't change. So we can do as much work over top, and I don't know about you, I see a number of folks here who are much better gardeners than I am, always thinking that, you know, if you add organic matter to soil, you're going to improve it. Well, it's unfortunately not necessarily the case. The soil stays the same. So if you look at the soil that's on the west part of Bowman, and you look at the soil that's under the school...
You're out of time.
I'm out of time?
About.
About out of time. You'll find a very similar thing. We've spent a lot of money trying to make some homes and so on work for those homes. When we redid the school, the street, the school was vastly more expensive for the same reason. 11th Avenue, we're doing it now.
This question is for both of you, and we agree that Commissioner James would begin, and it's from a member of the public. Do you believe it to be more important to attract new residents than it is to focus on the ones that have already made Bowman their home?
Absolutely not. I believe it's very important to focus on both. We have people who live here, who have invested here with their homes, their businesses, their jobs, and their community. And we definitely need to focus on ways to make sure that quality of life is the very best it can be for these people, including us. But we also have to do things to make it attractive to move here, because if we don't continue to grow, we will wither away, just like many communities in rural areas do. And so I think it's very important to look at both aspects and give them a good weight.
Commissioner Whitney, you have two minutes.
The question is really one of those that has no very good answer for the very simple reason that of course it's important to take care of the people here. One of the reasons that I was, got involved in this in the first place was the errant spending, what I saw as errant spending, the errant taxation, which makes it very difficult. Many of us sitting here are on a fixed income. When you start seeing the cost of business, cost of doing business with a city remarkably increase, it's difficult. Those of us with ongoing jobs have the possibilities of seeing more money coming into us. One of the things that attracted me to Bowman 35 years ago was its willingness to accept new people. That's not true in other places. Watford City, for example, is one, is one of the first places I worked in when I came out to North Dakota. Bowman has been a very welcoming place, and I would not ever want to see that change. The welcoming nature is probably one of the friendliest things about Bowman. Planning for the future is going to have to require some realism, however. It's not worth our while to endear ourselves up to our eyeballs, nor to gamble with money for the future that might come in to pay the bill.
All right, to Commissioner, Commissioner Whitney. The city maintains several special funds that total hundreds of thousands of dollars. What do you think that money should be used for, or should the city just keep saving?
The special funds that the city has are for the most part for equipment replacement. And I see our garbage chief right in the front row. For example, we just recently looked at replacing a garbage truck. Our street supervisors banked there a few rows. We just ended up buying a tractor.
But doesn't that come from part of the search funding and not a special fund?
Well... Yes, yes, actually both, but we also put funds aside for future equipment purchases. Those are two large items that we drew from special funds. So yes, we should continue to put money aside as we are able. Many of you may not know, or maybe you, you hear about it on the radio, with the drop in oil, the amount of money that's coming into, into our coffers as a result of oil income has dropped dramatically. So in order to keep our budget balance, which as many of you may know, we are obligated by sentry code to do, we've had to cut back the amount of money we've transferred into those spots. It's a difficult choice. Right now, speaking right now, we've got a fairly good equipment, equipment situation. That's not necessarily going to be the case two, three, four years ago. We also put money aside for chip sealing, for example. That's expensive. It's less expensive right now because the base product, which would be the oil, is less, but the chip itself is not cheap.
Commissioner James?
It's important to set aside money for projects and for equipment, no doubt. And we have had a process where we do that, and we rotate, we make sure our equipment is well-maintained, so when it's time to rotate and get a new piece of equipment, we can get trade for it. But each year, we put money away, and that is, it's very important. Then we have a care...
And you can hold on to those things, you know, write them down for your closing Q one. To Commissioner James? The city has taken on many large-scale projects in the past that require debt to be added to its balance sheet. For future projects, barring any grant money, how do you foresee the city moving forward with large projects without pushing those expenses onto the taxpayers or getting the city further into debt? Or would the city simply see no future projects?
We have two bond issues right now. One is the garbage bond issue, or the business that originally was $250,000, that will be paid off in May of 19. And then we have our city-county shop bond issue, or the city portion, and that was 910,000, I believe, 940,000? I have it in my notes here. And that will also be paid off in May of 19. We will do our best to make sure that we are putting money aside for big projects. This search funding has been a godsend for all of us. It has helped us to do some of those very large projects that have been looming over us, wondering how we were going to fund them. So it'll give us a chance to start building more substantial funds for the next large project, because we can thank the legislature for that. So hopefully, we won't have to do any bond issues. But we don't, we don't know what the future brings, you know? If something, some emergency happened and we had to replace, you know, something that was very, very important to the community, we may have to specially discuss, we may have to do a bond issue. I don't know without, you know, looking into a crystal ball.
Commissioner Whitney, your rebuttal?
Borrowing money is always a difficult thing to do. It's something to be avoided whenever possible. The, the funding of major projects really should be done with cash in hand. It should not be done on borrowed. The city-county shop was more or less a gamble that the oil revenue was going to continue to up, and that would cover the bill, and it has not done so. It did result in a doubling of the bill levy, and then renegotiating the bond. Those were sad things for, for the city. It created a lot of animosity where it didn't need to be. Some of our city employees after I became a commissioner made the remark that it was absolutely no fun going to work for quite a while.
Commissioner Whitney, on the subject of borrowing money? You were quoted in a March 2013 story in the Bowman County Pioneer where you called grant money "a deal with the devil," and that it's a situation you can't win. Unless there are obvious conflicts of interest, why would you ever deny grant money for the city and ultimately the taxpayers if it meant fiscal success?
First of all, grant money is tax money. It's not free. Somebody had to give something up to have it. Secondly, it's very, very rare that there are not strings attached to money. Sometimes it is free for the short term, but eventually, I know I face it with my own business, you've taken federal dollars, Dr. Whitney, you will do it our way. And that's what I see, and that's why I made that remark.
Commissioner James, do you have a rebuttal?
Just, just briefly, we have done some wonderful projects with grant money. State brought to school is a good example, where we managed to leverage, you know, our very small dollars with state and county funds, BLM funds. The, this, this search funding is a grant, and we're looking at four and a half million dollars that's a direct benefit to everyone in this room. The, the projects that we are working on outside of the industrial park have a direct benefit to every single property that it, that, we go by water meters just to come up with the number of properties. Every single water meter user has a benefit of $5,278 apiece because of these projects that have been a grant. So that's a good, pretty good deal, I think.
To Commissioner James? Obviously, property taxes have a lot to do with property valuations, but do you foresee a raise in property taxes in other situations, such as the city requesting a mill levy?
You know, we have worked very hard. I would say we worked tirelessly, talking about the last four years, and speaking up directly since we are both here and both have served the past four years. Worked very hard to keep our taxes at a level, on a level playing field. And, you know, valuation is, is something that plays into how taxes are figured. And our city valuation in 2012, which was the first year that Commissioner Whitney came on board, was, was a total of $3,779,734. In 15, it was $4,000,000, or $846,234. And so, you know, you see that valuation going up, which then helps us keep things a little more level. Some of it is reassessment because of the value of the properties that are sold, some of it has to do with new properties coming on the tax rolls. It becomes, it's a, it's a time-consuming cumbersome process, which I'd be happy to explain to anyone in depth, but probably not in the two minutes that I'm giving here. Anyway, so I just did a little cap, recap of our house. In 2012, it was valued at $214,670, and the tax, the state tax was $780. And in 2015, it was valued at $253,940, and our tax bill for the city was $751.77. So it was actually $30 less. Now, we work very hard to keep things as level as possible. Coming up in the future here, we are hoping to keep it very, very level. We will be asking the, the ancillary programs that we support to take a budget cut. We will also be working to cut our budgets so that we don't have to raise taxes.
Commissioner Whitney, your rebuttal?
Point is very well-taken. We did work hard to keep the budget as level as we could. The elephant in that room unfortunately is the games that have been played with the values of our home. Some of this we have no control over. The state basically demands that we come within 90 to 100% of the sales, sales at any one point in time, and they basically run that bus. So it's, it's frustrating for every homeowner in this room, but it's not something that we can control. And another thing we cannot control is oil income, which is the big part of our budget, so it's foolish for us to guarantee that we're not going to raise taxes. I don't think that's reasonable.
So just to follow up on that, you're agreeing that the, it's more the state having to do with property tax valuations than the city would have anything to do with, correct?
In terms? In terms of the increase in our houses? It's still an arbitrary process, and it's... Uh, it's still an arbitrary process and it's not a reasonable one. But I realize there's more than one, one and a half billion on that subject.
Commissioner Whitney. You own and operate a business that requires you to be present with patients scheduling appointments. If something important came up within the city or elsewhere that required your immediate attention and you were with a patient, wouldn't that prohibit your involvement in such circumstances?
Most of the time, I can reschedule a patient if I have to. Fortunately, my work is not of the most urgent. It's not like removing a, a, a bad appendix or something like that. Um, my patients have already been very, very tolerant of me leaving, leaving the office for city things. So no, I don't see that that would be a problem.
Do you have any, any comments?
Commissioner James, do you believe that the city's board under your leadership has accepted the mentality of higher taxes and more spending?
Do you repeat that?
And, and sorry, this is for public as well. Do you believe that the city's board under your leadership has accepted the mentality of higher taxes, more spending?
No, I do not believe that. We have worked, like I said earlier, tirelessly to keep the taxes as level as possible. Uh, we are very mindful of it. And I think we're respectful of all of the citizens. We do the best we can to provide all of the services and, and the quality of life things that we all have come to enjoy and yet make sure that we pay our bill. And no, I don't, I don't think we have that mindset.
Commissioner Whitney, your rebuttal?
When you look at the size of the budget, it hasn't changed very much over the last three or four years. That is the part where it has been a group effort to try and control costs. Is it higher than it was ten years ago? Absolutely. Are your taxes higher than they were ten years ago? Absolutely. There are things that make most of us unhappy and that's when we have to pay for something that we figure we're not getting very much for. And that said, since I've been on this commission, I began to appreciate, for example, that our screen lights, just one item on our budget that we pay for on a monthly basis, we keep those for granted. I don't know how many of you in this room, I know I do, how many of you walk at night? Those are things which we pay for every month. And unfortunately, just as your own M U bills ours go up. So no, I don't think it's a function that literally we're thinking in terms of raising your taxes and spending more money. But there are things which cost us money and cost you money too, which we have no control over.
A follow-up on that question for Commissioner Whitney. You had said at the start that the city board is not exactly reckless spending, but that the, the spending is getting higher and higher. But now you've just said that it's, it's pretty much out of the control, so which is...
No, I, I, I'm sorry, that's not what I said. I did not say that, that we were being reckless in our spending. I'm saying that there are things which are costing everybody more today than they did five and ten years ago. So the, the impression has to be that we're spending more money. Uh, our property taxes are higher now than they were ten years ago. It's hard to deny that. We're paying off a shop, we're paying off a garbage business.
Commissioner Whitney, do you believe Bowman and the city board should adopt a more progressive mindset or should it be business as usual?
Right, so when it comes to what's progressive, that's a term I'd like to hear defined more accurately. So before I answer the question, John, you want to...
What would your definition be?
You ask the question. Go ahead.
Do you think that, um, do you think that we're modern in our ordinances and in our policies and in the way that the city operates? Or do you think we're, we're behind the times?
That is a very difficult question to answer only because what we have here has been working and has been working well for many of us. There are those out there with an agenda that everything has to change because today is Tuesday. That is not a good idea. However, there are factors in our board which change and we have to change with them. Does that mean we should throw out all the rules? I don't think so. I think it's fair for us to live to the, to the rules that we've all grown up with. U S business as usual, I don't think that's a reasonable question either. For example, uh, I'll go back to the garbage truck that we're, we just, um, just authorized. As we stand right now, we're hauling all our garbage to Baker. Eventually, I'd like to see us do a compactor, maybe even recycle some stuff. The big problem with that is that it costs money to buy different trucks. It costs money to separate these things and then finally to ship them. So it's not unlikely, in fact, maybe even possible, that we're going to have it mandated upon us whether we want it or not. I'm using this as a specific example. We're business as usual. We may want to do business as usual, but it may not happen.
I guess a, a better question to phrase that in better terms would be, um, and again, this, you know, it's, it's open to discussion, but do you think that the city is afraid of change? You say, you know, there's people that exist that want to change every Tuesday. Do you think it's not better for the city progression?
As time, as time goes, as time goes on, all of us, all of us tend to fall into a, a regular daily pattern. I have it. And we don't particularly care for change. The older we are, the more likely that is to happen. However, let's, let's just have a show of hands in here. How many of you guys have cell phones? Can I see a show of hands? Maybe I should ask the other question. How many of you don't have cell phones? Hey, hello, guys? I don't have one on me. But think about the big change in our lives that a cell phone has made. Now, it may seem like a silly example, but you know, in, in not so long ago, if you weren't talking to me personally, face to face, it didn't happen. The changes with a smart phone, changes with a smart phone versus a, just a track phone are also incredible. They allow access to information. That's probably not...
Yeah. Okay. Your rebuttal? And you can have, uh, you can have a...
Thank you. All right. I, I'd just like to comment that, that the question was about change and progressiveness and I'd, I'd like to think that Bowman is progressive. We, you know, I travel across the state, meet with different boards and different communities and they, uh, Bowman is a shining star. Bowman is held in very high regard statewide because we are forward-thinking, we look a little bit outside of the box, make sure that we are, uh, moving forward and not backward or not just being stale. And so, change is okay. It sometimes takes a long time to enact change. Um, our ordinances are a good example. The time it takes to do an ordinance redo is just ridiculous. But we're keeping a file and it's, and as soon as our zoning ordinances are updated, which the planning zoning commission has worked on and the city commission is now going over, um, then our, our administrator will start on the rest of our ordinances.
Okay, for the bottom. Commissioner James, this is a question from the public. It was a concern that the city only has one backup generator, yet the lift station and water supply requires a generator. In the scenario that the city loses power for an extended period of time, what would the city do to ensure its citizens have access to running water and use of sewage?
We do have one generator. We looked at purchasing, uh, a couple of other generators and some commissioners were opposed to that. Uh, they felt that we could rent them from somewhere in Dickinson maybe or somewhere nearby. I personally thought we should purchase them. But, um, uh, we do have the direct hookups in place for our emergency shelters. We have our, all of our ducts in our, you might say, with our water and sewer issues so that we can hook up generators when we need to. So, and we do keep the one that we have serviced and ready to go.
Okay, so you're saying we don't have, we only have one generator, but we, it would require the commission to purchase more, but there are hookups.
The, the plug-ins are ready. We, we paid for all of that to be done, so we can wheel one right up to wherever it needs to be plugged in and go. But at this point, we own one. And the intention of the majority of the commission was to rent if we needed them. I have a concern with that just because if we need it, perhaps there are other communities because of an emergency that also need it. But the, the decision was made, so.
Commissioner Whitney?
Okay, um, the point is well taken, except for the fact that we have at least three welding businesses in town who all have very, very large welders which will also serve as a generator. And they could very easily be leased from local people right here, right now. The long-term question is, do we need to have more equipment that's sitting around and not being used? Um, many of you have started your lives or maybe still live in the country. How many generators in fact are perfectly fine unless they are running service regularly? And if they're not running, running, running service regularly, when you need them, they're not there. So that was our concern as a, as a board in terms of buying extra equipment just because.
Commissioner Whitney. As Commissioner, you cast a vote during a city meeting in 2014 in opposition of putting the question on the public ballot of increasing the city's sales tax by one penny in order to build a new recreation center. Ultimately, it was defeated anyway. But do you not believe the city's residents should have had a choice for it to be on the ballot?
I feel the taxation should always be a question for the people.
So you voted against?
I voted against the tax. I did not vote against the, the issue itself. However, let's address it as if that's all that happened. I came from an area on the east coast where taxation was out of control and basically got to the point where it was running up towards ten percent. Now, the fallacy of taxation is that it's not going to hurt anybody, it's only a penny on the dollar. That's probably true if you're buying a dollar item. However, if you're buying, uh, a piece of expensive equipment or you're building a house or anything which requires a significant amount of money outlay, that gets to be real money. And you start finding people will make decisions to not buy in our community.
Okay, so, so the question was, you voted against putting it on the ballot? Or did you just not understand what it is? Because the city wouldn't have voted to approve the tax, then, you know, it would go to the ballot. And you voted against going to the ballot.
I felt, I felt, I felt that the tax itself was wrong and that's why I voted the way I voted.
The opportunity to put it on the ballot for the people is definitely the way we should do things when we come, when it comes to sales tax. And, um, that's, that's what they were asking us to do. And I believe it then went to petition and that's how it ended up on the ballot.
To Commissioner James. While it meets all state and federal requirements for public drinking water, many residents and tourists feel the city's water is not up to par. The public voted against a deal with Southwest Water several years ago, but would you, as commission president, want to revisit the matter? Why or why not?
If the community was interested in revisiting it, certainly. I'm always open to whatever the community wants to talk about. I don't believe that it's even realistic though at this point because I don't think they're taking on any more users. So we really wouldn't be able to, we could visit, but we wouldn't be able to, uh, hook up, I, is the way I understand it. Our water meets the requirements of the state. Um, I think it depends on if you grew up here drinking that water. I, I mean, I, I don't see anything wrong with it because I grew up on it. People that come here to visit or move here, they might have a different opinion, but it is safe to drink.
Commissioner Whitney, I see you shaking your head. What's your rebuttal?
Well, very briefly, when you grow up here, it not doesn't mean the water tastes good or tastes bad. I drink a lot of water here. I'm going to say this though. The levels of minerals that are in our water are not something we're going to be able to change easily, obviously. Uh, some of this water probably would have sidestepped that. The decision of our people not to hook up to Southwest Water was a sound one because the contract which Les Fox, who was the city commissioner twenty-six years ago showed me was not favorable to Bowman, not even a little bit. The Dickinson water people wanted us to buy three times the amount of water that we ever used before at whatever price they wanted to charge. That is wrong. Lynn's right in the sense that the, the pipe is in the ground, the chances of us getting Southwest Water now are slim to none. I see that we may end up having to do something with our water in the future. I mentioned a reverse osmosis system.
Would you be against a connection to Southwest Water if it was available?
Quite frankly, it would be a function of the, uh, contract offered. I think most of the people in the room here would not like to see their water bills tripled just because. But that would be very much a choice just as it was last time. That would be a voted issue to my mind.
And by the way, the, the water that you're drinking is not potent water. This is to both of you. Commissioner James will start with you. In 2015, the city's sales tax saw a twenty-six percent decrease in sales and a twenty-five percent decrease in sales and purchases. That represents millions of dollars lost for the city. How does the city maintain its current level of services with less state funds and now reduced sales tax revenue?
Are you saying that it costs the city, the city, uh, funds millions of dollars?
No, it's just a loss of it.
Okay. Because it doesn't cost the city millions of dollars. Uh, I'm not sure exactly where the decreases came in. Oil field would be one, but, uh, I really can't, I haven't looked into the, the root of that problem or that issue. But hopefully, we will see an increase again. That is a statewide issue. We have seen a decrease in our state aid, which comes from sale tax. It's a formula that, that is based on our population and we do see a decrease. But we'll just have to work that into our budgets and figure out how to make that work.
Commissioner Whitney?
Essentially, it goes back to what, what was said before that. We've ended up not making budget transfers for some of the things that don't have to be covered right now. That's in the short term. And in the long term, yes, we are going to have to be looking hard at I want versus I need in our budgeting process. That is a group effort. That's not any one, one of us. It's a group effort.
We're starting to run short on time. We have a few more questions. But I, I wanted to touch on business. Let's start with Commissioner Whitney. What do you believe is the best tactic for attracting new businesses to the city?
The job, the job that our tax and tourism people do is probably second to none. I've traveled a lot in western North Dakota through my district governor, Tim Williams, and we do an outstanding job. The people tips that the B C D C people have put out, it basically, it basically exposes people to what we've got here. We have a hard, it's a fight of being in a very small town. We have a very conscious fight of being in a very small town. We have a very much more cosmopolitan society than we even appreciate. Many, many, many of us travel, in fact, most of us travel. So the answer to your question, in my mind, is to continue to keep things up as best we can, to keep things clean as best we can, to keep things maintained as best we can. What makes a business work or not work, unfortunately, is not table tents, it's not banners on the road. What it is, is capital. And unfortunately, that's not something that we can control. If there's one reason that a business fails, and for some people, it's between 50 and 80% of the new businesses fail, it's because of lack of capital. And unfortunately, we do not have that in our head pockets to give. The other thing that I saw some years ago, that our chamber was doing, it's not, I don't think it's been doing recently, is enterprise classes. There are people in this audience, there are people in our community who might very well be able to start up a business, but as, and there are a lot of you guys out there that are business owners, it's not easy to start a business. It takes, it takes some blood, sweat, and tears, it also takes some basic knowledge. So I'm thinking some enterprise classes might be very useful, some basic finance classes.
I can tell you that our economic development office is very busy with programs they offer, and they are supported by the city and the county. We also have a small business development center here in that same office that is extremely active, that they do offer classes, they have a group called Empowering Leaders that is instilling leadership and confidence skills in younger people. And our, our small business development center is so impactful and so impressive that when the strong center closed, I'm sure you've seen that in the news recently, Bowman's office was asked to carry the role until they could replace, until they could replace that, that office in Dickinson with some other funding.
Commissioner Whitney? Following the special election for the city board in 2013, rumors began circulating around the city that led the city's employees to react with fear of losing their jobs or the change in commissioners. Some members of the public have already publicly alleged that the same thing is going to happen after this election. How could you assure the current staff that you've made no firing or hiring decisions or forceful resignations without consent of the full board and with public transparency?
That's a nice loaded question. Well, I think the past history shows that that was a big fat lie in 2013, and it's a big fat lie. And it's, it's really sad to hear that it comes up, because I've dealt with all of our, all of our staff with courtesy and respect, which they deserve, and I have not always been treated back that way in terms of communication. And I've noticed that there isn't one of them that doesn't have a sign for Lynn in their yard, but that's really got nothing to do with it. What we're here for today is for all of you to listen to both of us and to make a decision one way or the other. This city cannot work with one person. Our city does not function with one person. We have never, I shouldn't say never, we have not fired or relieved anybody today or not anticipating in the future. Those of you who are business owners in this room know that you have to have just cause to do that, and the difference of opinion, whether you like me or I like you, is not just cause, it's job compliance.
Does that apply to the, does that include the police department as well?
It includes, it includes everybody, because you know, if you, am I okay?
Yeah.
All right. Because if you unilaterally dislike someone or dislike the job that they're doing, that's really only European. The process, the process of having people work for the city is you work for the entire commission, not just one person.
Well, I hear some laughs, so I'm gonna explain the basis for that question. There was a resident who alleged that you had told Police Chief Headley that if you came into office, you would force him to leave his job. Is that true?
After Chief Headley unilaterally, unilaterally offended me publicly at a city meeting, and then wrote a very nasty, nasty letter to the, to your predecessor, which also got published with no rebuttal from me, that's pretty unilateral.
So you're talking about in the past?
I am talking at the time, at the time of this incident taking place. And I also said, which is unfortunate, but we're getting quoted out of context here, which is unfortunate, I said to this man at that time, if this were up to me, and it's not, and it's not, you elected to put that into the quote, that's what would happen. However, I'm gonna tell you that Chief Headley and I have worked together a whole heck of a lot better since then, and I think that the bullying tactics that were happening in that room stuck right there. By the way, I realize that there are two sides to any bullying issue. I don't like being bullied either.
Commissioner James?
All I wanna say is that we have an outstanding staff. They serve you, the people, every single day, and they do it with pride and integrity. And my hat's off to every one of them. Thank you so much for all you do.
This is to both of you, and this is a public question. Incidents of drug use and trafficking is taking on a meteoric rise within the city. What are your thoughts on how to combat this serious issue with the best interests of the public in mind?
Well, a meteoric rise, I think we need to be careful with that, because that is a scary statement to make. If you look at the percentage of increase, it, it does appear that way. I believe in 14, we had one case, and in 15, we had five cases that were drug arrests that, that were, that were larger, you know, larger drug arrests. I, I don't like that statement, meteoric. I will say that they, our law enforcement has been incredibly busy. A lot of it is domestic and, and/or drug related, and we are very fortunate, most of us in this room, we don't know about it because they're doing their jobs. The people who serve us in the, they work with our law enforcement and deal with it. We have, we have had to help BCI here at one time or another. Drug enforcement is, is a very touching thing. We are not financially handling the drug enforcement unit here, so we depend on the district to help us with that.
Commissioner Whitney?
Drug and alcohol problems have been a part of our country, just moment. Our country's existent lives for probably as long as we've been a country. The bottom line of drug enforcement or alcohol abuse is really personal responsibility, how much you and I take responsibility for our actions. None of us in this room are perfect, so expecting that our law enforcement folks can step in and do that basic parenting and personal responsibility job, I don't think is realistic. We have had a drug task force down here, and Lynn's point is well taken. These are expensive, it's, it's a long time to get a lot of, very little, little bit done, which is one of the reasons why, at the recommendation of our chief of police, we have stopped our participation in it. It's not to say that drugs suddenly don't exist. Everybody in this room knows that there's been drug abuse in our community. I don't wanna be a bowman about that for the very simple reason, and I don't see that that's any different in any other place. We do what we can. Part of it, I think, is also responsibility of each and every one of us. The concept of a neighborhood launch works. Why not? Our police can't be everywhere at any, at all times.
It appeared you were opposed to the building of the new library several years ago because of what you were talking about earlier would further burden the taxpayers. Seeing how many people utilize the libraries and group services in the facility, have your opinions changed, and would you continue to support the library as president?
The library is a wonderful asset to our community. The expansion of the library, actually, the library basically started with one half of what used to be the old Red Owl Building, and then doubled in size. My remarks, taken out of context, had to do with doubling of size. No, I'm not opposed to the library. In fact, I probably read as much or more as anyone in this room. The facility is par none, a huge asset to our community. So to say that I would not support the library is just plain and simply out of context and totally untrue.
And we have just a few questions left. This is to both of you as well. Considering Denbury-on-Shore's plans for carbon dioxide flooding over the next several years, and the potential creation of a Denbury pipeline within the county, if the oil boom returns to Bowman, do you think the city would be capable of seeing a major influx of citizens who are in traffic? How would you work to solve any major problems associated with the boom, and do you think the city's comprehensive plan is adequate enough?
That's quite a multi-disciplinary question. As far as the pipeline being built, there would be an influx of temporary workers, and we have had many projects where we have entertained and hosted large temporary worker groups, and, and I think we've done quite well. And with our additional facilities, a couple new motels, we should, or hotels, I guess they are, we should be able to better assist and, and some more food options and things like that. And so that isn't a problem, really. And the pipeline itself, I don't believe would, it would create some very good jobs, but I don't believe it would be a mass influx of permanent workers. Probably similar, well, I, I don't even know. I can't, I don't know enough about it to say how many jobs it would produce, but I know pipelines are more limited in their full-time positions. So I think it would be a great benefit to us. The pipeline itself would add value to our county tax rolls, an incredible amount of value there, which would help all of us, because it would bring tax dollars in to account to the budget. So that would be a good thing.
Commissioner Whitney?
The current, the current dioxide pipeline has been under discussion for several years and has been continuously put off and put on hold. The understanding that I have from patients that work in the oil business and others of you who work in the oil business who I've also visited with, is this is going to increase the productivity of our oil patch, such as it is. Many of you know that our oil patch, in fact, is a middle-aged to an old, old oil-producing area. So the idea of it would be to increase the output from our wells. Lynn is absolutely correct. There would be a relatively short influx of people to deal with building it. We've had other projects, for example, the Highline crew that came through, there was a pipeline crew here also, we were able to handle infected. I think it's fair to say, without being cynical, our hotel people would be delighted to see this happen, so would the rest of us. But that is short term. Long term, these are not projects which are gonna bring a huge number of jobs, similar to a wind farm. A wind farm requires people while you're building, but when you're finished building, it's a very small group of people. Correct, it will enter our tax roll. Correct, it will increase, at least for some time, the output of our wells, which will also have an effect in terms of the oil revenues that we receive. So it's something I look forward to, but I wouldn't pin my hopes on it completely.
All right, so the final question, and this is to both of you again. While there exists such a strong divide in Bowman's political ideologies, on several occasions in recent history, it has begun to turn from freedom of expression to outright attacking. How would you work to bring the community together rather than having it continue to be divided as president?
It's been very sad to see this happen, and I would, I would hope that we can all work together to do our best, to come together and be the community that we used to be, where we're kind to one another regardless of our opinions, we can respect each other and agree to disagree. And I'll try to encourage that, and I will continue to encourage that going forward, whether I am elected or not, because I think that this community is better than that, and we need to work together.
Commissioner Lynn?
I think one of the things that makes people the most angry is when they see one group of people benefiting at the expense of a large number of others. No matter how hard we try to be fair, to be reasonable, and to communicate, not everybody is on the same page. I think one of the things that can perhaps bring us better or closer together is more meetings actually like this, and I expect that there's gonna be a chance for you to ask both Lynn and I questions. You're not dealing with people that are interested in pulling the wool over your eyes in spite of what you may believe. We really have very little to gain by doing that. If we don't have cooperation from the people, we can't get it done either.
And the final, the final question for me is, both of you, what is your vision for the future of the city of Bowman?
I truly believe that the vision, that our future is bright. We have a very strong agribusiness economy here, good, good businesses located here to support the young farmers and ranchers. Gosh, we're very fortunate to have those generational young people taking over these farms and ranches and committing to that. And we certainly have our oil industry here that will hopefully continue to expand and grow. The spin-off from the Bakken that we've enjoyed over the years, the future of our industrial park, which hopefully will bring us some other businesses. And we have a business district that is attractive, it's strong, and very welcoming. And we are far enough away from the larger communities that it's a little easier to support. People aren't necessarily running out of town all the time. So we just need to keep working on enticing people to shop at home, which our chamber office and development office shoppers are always working on. We also have the benefit of living on Highway 85 and 12, so we have a good tourism path, and try to capture things with that all the time. And we have a very strong base community. We have a great school system, we have a great healthcare system, all of those things, our parking wreck is, is strong. Also, all those things come together, they make this a good place to live, work, and play, and if we can keep those things strong, we will, we will see a bright future.
Commissioner?
I think the challenges that we face, witness the current Bakken bust, the grain prices, many of our farmers will see little, little bit of profit from their crops this year, for example. I believe that reasonable diversification is probably our best bet. Light industry, product distribution, value added. The big question is, do we have the labor to make these things work? That's gonna be our challenge. During the recent Bakken, Bakken explosion, there wasn't a business in town that didn't suffer from lack of labor. So... So that will be our problem in the future, as I see it. One of the things that I see that other towns have done, and have helped them, and that would be an expansion of fast internet. I believe it's called T-Wo. I'm not a T-Wo guy. This is the kind of, this is the kind of thing that is going to allow corporate jobs, which are already being outsourced, to be done in places like Bowman. The assets that we have is we have a beautiful, small town. We have decent facilities, and we have a good quality of life. We know that. We want to see that. And in that sense, yeah, business as usual. We don't want to see that go away. But in terms of building for the future, things as we see them may not be here. So that's why planning for some of the changes as best we can is important. But be realistic. We don't control the oil prices. We don't control the grain prices. We don't control any of that stuff. So diversification is going to probably be our best bet for making that work.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open it up to the audience. If anybody has a question, I welcome them to come to the podium. We have about 10 minutes left before 8:30, so. Looks like I just did my job so well. There's no other questions. Nobody else? All right. Well, I will throw it over to Lin for her closing remarks.
Thank you. Bowman is a shining example of what a fine North Dakota community should be. We have a great deal to be proud of here, and that does not happen without strong, solid leadership that is realistic about challenges and yet optimistic about the future. I truly believe that I am that leader for you. You know, we do face some challenging times ahead, but I'm confident that with an experienced leadership team, we can lead the citizens of Bowman forward in order to capture the opportunities ahead. I would certainly appreciate both. Appreciate your vote, I do want to. Thank you.
Commissioner Whitney?
You would expect me to ask for your vote also. I would like the chance to earn your vote. Honesty, integrity, not doing things behind people's backs. That is basically why I'm running. That's why I plan to do this in the future. If that is not something you see in me, I'm sorry. This is a great, huge personal risk that I'm here. The future to me is something we can grasp, hold up, and make something out of. Business as usual is not the answer. Thank you.
All right, thank you to both of you.